Call the meeting to order. Rise for the pledge of the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. We have eight board members present, and we are trying to get Anik in on Zoom. Jeff, is she on now?
Not yet.
Not yet. So let's, shall we have eight present and let us know when she comes in? Moves this to 2.1, public comment. First public comment is just for agenda-related items. We have a public comment at the end of the meeting for any items. Is there any public comment regarding any of the agenda items? Nothing in the audience? Jeff, anything online?
No.
No public comments, so we move to agenda item three, 3.1, report of the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. So a few things as opening day approaches. The first thing is opening day. Opening day is Wednesday, August 20th, and we are very much looking forward to welcoming students to the start of the 25-26 school year. A couple of things. First-day packets. We are asking all families who have not yet completed the first-day packet to please do so as soon as possible. The first-day packet is critical to our transportation and parent communication systems. Speaking of transportation, bus letters will be mailed in the next few days. You should expect to receive them no later than Monday, August 18th. One of the things that I shared in my blog earlier today is TransFinder. We've invested heavily in improving our transportation services with the TransFinder software, and later this fall, we'll be rolling out a parent app called StopFinder, which will allow parents to track their child's bus in real time. Unfortunately, we can't start that with the brand-new year. It's going to be a little into the fall, but we're excited about that. Before and after care. We do anticipate offering before and after care in cooperation with the YMCA. The location of the program will depend on the number of students who register. If you're interested, please see our website for details. Pre-K counts. This year is our second year with pre-K counts, and we've relocated the pre-K counts classroom to Lower Pots Grove Elementary School. Our Lower Pots Grove Elementary Assistant Principal, Mr. Jesse Roth, will be leading the pre-K counts program. We currently do have a full classroom at 15 students. We only have 15 licenses this year. There is a possibility that we may have access to additional funding to add five more students. Interested families should contact Mr. Roth at Lower Pots Grove Elementary to register for the waitlist. Two other things. As we look to start the new school year, we also celebrate our summer programming. We had 146 students in a variety of different summer programs, including summer success and extended school year. Thank you very much to the dedicated staff who gave up part, or in some cases, almost all of their summer, to support our students in these programs, to provide the extra support they need. And lastly, PSBA honor roll for school board service awards. It is my honor tonight to recognize three board members for their continued service to our district. Please know that board member, board service is volunteer and requires a significant investment of time, and we have three individuals tonight who have served five or 10 years. So if I can embarrass them this evening. First up is our President Jay Strunk, five years of service. Congratulations, sir. And we have two 10-year veterans. Ashley Custer, 10 years of service, congratulations. And Jim Lafferty, 10 years of service, congratulations, sir. And that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Finney. Moves us to agenda item four, approval of minutes, 4.1 approval of the board action minutes from the June 10th meeting.
I'd like to make a motion we approve for.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the June 10th minutes. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes.
Is, real quick, is Anik on yet?
Agenda item number five, approving the high school student activity, middle school student activity, and cafeteria accounts for May 2025.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 5.1. This would be approve the high school student accounts, middle student accounts, and cafeteria accounts for May 2025 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the accounts for May 2025. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 5.2, approval of the high school student activity accounts, middle school student activity accounts, and the cafeteria accounts for June 2025.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the high school student accounts, activities, middle school student activities, and cafeteria accounts for June 2025 as presented.
Motion and a second to approve the accounts for June 2025. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number six, ratifying the payment of invoices for the June 2025.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the payment of invoices for June 2025 in the amount of $1,475.82 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the invoices for June 2025. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 6.2, ratifying the payment of invoices for July 2025.
I'd like to make a motion that we pay the invoices of July 2025 in the amount of $3,346.102.75 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the invoices for July 2025. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item seven, treasurer's report, 7.1, approving the May 2025 treasurer's report.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve May 2025 treasurer's report as presented and file it for audit.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the May 2025 treasurer's report. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 7.2, approving the June 2025 treasurer's report.
I'd like to make a motion we approve the June 2025 treasurer's report as presented and file it for audit.
Motion and a second to approve the June 2025 treasurer's report. Any discussion? Those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item eight, action items, 8.1, approving the independent contractor agreement with Terry Kohler for pre-K counts and for support to the new principal at Ringing Rocks.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 8.1.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve 8.1. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to thank her. She's wonderful. I'm glad to have her back.
Those in favor? Opposed? The motion passes. 8.2, granting of tenure for five people, four teachers, and a school psychologist.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 8.2 granting of tenure for the following.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the granting of tenure for these five people. Any discussion?
Congratulations. That's a big accomplishment for them.
Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 8.3, appointment to a dean of students for Lower Pots Grove Elementary.
Okay, get ready for this. I'd like to make a motion. We approve 8.3 through 8.17, but pull out 8.12, which I will be abstaining from.
Motion and a second to approve 8.3 through 8.17, not 8.12. This is administrative staff appointments, professional staff leave of absence, professional staff appointments, professional staff change in assignments, professional staff resignations, support staff appointments, support staff change in assignments, support staff retirement and resignations, approval of the special education extended school year, additional staff, the three additional staff, and leaving that out, 8.13, four facility staff for the summer worker positions, 8.14, two technology staff for the summer intern positions, 8.15, superintendent evaluation, 8.16, the approval of the extension of the summer hiring authority through August 26th, and 8.17, approval of the Kelly Educational Services contract for substitutes. Any discussion on any of those items? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motions pass.
I'd like to, yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote on 8.12 supplemental staff athletic appointments.
Motion and a second to approve 39 supplemental staff athletic appointments. Any discussion on any of those appointments?
I will be abstaining.
Note that Patty Grimm is abstaining from the vote. Any other discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motions, motion passes. Moves us to agenda item nine, action items business, 9.1, approving budget transfers from May 25 through June 2025.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 9.1.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve 9.1 budget transfers. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 9.2, change order, an additional, an increase in the paving project at the middle school and Lower Pots Grove Elementary School.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 9.2 with an explanation for the community.
Yes, so 9.2 is a change order. As you may be aware, or certainly are aware, we have paved the parking lot at Lower Pots Grove Elementary and both lots at the middle school. In the course of those projects, there were multiple changes to the original order. Some were subtractions, some were additions. There is a net addition. It's relatively minor, and it made more sense to make that addition now instead of having to engage the contractor down the road.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second to approve the change order for the paving project at middle school and Lower Pots Grove Elementary. Any other discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 9.4 is approving a contract, three. Thank you. 9.3, approve the full winner athletic bid.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 9.3, the athletic bid, again with an explanation for the community.
9.3, this is, and I'm looking at Mr. Onsbach, this is our standard bid for athletic supplies that we do this every year. Is that a fair explanation?
Make a visit, post it on our website, and send it out to the office, and then it gets sent directly to the business office, and then Mr. Linky and I open them up for the best.
We have a motion and a second to approve the athletic bid. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 9.4, approving the contract with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for hosting and supporting the Power School System.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 9.4 through 9.6.
Motion and a second to approve 9.4 through 9.6, which is the hosting and support of the Power School System, the licensing and state reporting of the Power School System with the Intermediate Unit, and also add-ons to the information system through the Intermediate Unit. Any discussion on those three items? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motions pass. 9.7 is approving the transportation contract for 25-26 with CMD Services.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve 9.7, and I have a comment after.
Motion and a second to approve the transportation contract. Patty, a comment?
Yes, first, I'd like to thank Mr. Linky for all his hard work with CMD. I know we had a rough year last year. I'm hoping for this year that we're going to have a successful year.
If I can speak to that a little bit, I'd also like to thank Mr. Linky for working with CMD and also our partners at CMD. There's a couple of significant things that have changed. So what we're approving now is a, we're reaffirming the contract. There is a new support position at CMD to provide better service and better communication, which we look as, look at as a value add. The addition of the TransFinder software and the parent app is, should be a very valuable thing once we get that turned on. And then lastly, we've also looked at some routes and combining some routes with some non-public routes and some special education routes with other vendors that are perhaps better suited to do this. So all told, we think we have a very good plan in place to provide better service to our, our community.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2025-26 transportation contract with CMD Services. Any further discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 9.8, accepting a foundation grant with Dick's Sporting Goods of $5,000 to help with our batting cage project.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 9.8.
Motion and a second to approve 9.8, the grant from Dick's Sporting Goods for the batting cage project. Any discussion?
Apparently we're sharing a microphone.
Did they, was that something that we had to, you know, apply for, or did they just, like, hey, we're your neighbors, we're going to give you $5,000 towards this, or, I mean, it's really great of them, I just was curious as to.
In this case, normally we have to solicit these, but in this case, they reached out to us.
So one of our community parents helped with Pots, grew up Potsdown Baseball Youth Little League. They had an opportunity to work with Dick's and get a grant. So they pretty much got me in contact with this individual that does some grant writing with Dick's. And we needed to have a project, the scope of a project, so I applied for the grant, and we were able to get it.
Motion and, oh, motion and a second. Did we do that? Do we approve the grant?
We just need a vote.
Oh, we've not voted. We have a motion and a second to approve the foundation grant from Dick's Sporting Goods. Any further discussion? Those in favor? Opposed? The motion passes. 9.9 is approval of a contract with UHS of Doylestown for a, students to go to the Life Works School.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve 9.9 through 9.15.
Motion and a second to approve 9.9 through 9.15. This is attendance in Life Works Schools for students. 9.10 is approving administration to execute a contract for one student with the Yale School. 9.11, approving a contract with access learning for one student. 9.12, approval of a letter of agreement between Creative Health Services and Pots Grove School District for a student assistance program. 9.13, approval of, this is an information item. It's not even looking for approval. It's information that the administration has signed an annual letter of agreement for the 25-26 school year in compliance with the PA Children and Youth Experiencing Homelessness Program under the McKinley-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. Information there. 9.14 is approval of a contract with the Lincoln Center for family and, family and youth for a drug and alcohol counselor. And 9.15 is a contract agreement for student services with the Chester County Intermediate Unit. Any discussion on any of those items? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motions pass. 9.16 is the renewal of a, of a confidential agreement for one student for the Yale School.
I'd like to make a motion we combine and approve 9.16 and 9.17.
Motion and a second to combine 9.16 and 9.17, a confidential agreement for one student at the Yale School, and 9.17, a confidential agreement for one student. School is not specified. Any discussion? Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motions pass. Agenda item ten, action items, education. Ten point one is a approval to accept a foreign exchange student from Spain for the twenty five, twenty six school year.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve ten point one.
Motion and a second to approve ten point one. Any discussion?
I have a request. I would like to meet the student someday. For all of us to meet the student.
Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Ten point two is approval of participation by five selected high, Potts Grove High School students in the Dream Forward Elevating Student Voice Project with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve ten point two.
Motion and a second to approve ten point two, the Dream Forward Elevating Student Project for five selected students at the high school. Those in favor? Oh, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Ten point three is approval for a conference attendance for two board members, Anique and Stacy, to attend the PASA, which is the Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators, and the Pennsylvania School Board Association Conferences.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve ten point three.
Motion and a second to approve ten point three. Any discussion?
Just a comment.
Do they, they can vote? Okay.
I was just gonna say, have fun. It's, take it all in, yeah. I'm glad you're gonna do that.
Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Ten point four is approval of conference attendance for two staff members to attend the Attendance Child Accounting and Professional Association Fall Conference.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve ten point four through ten point eight.
Motion and a second to approve ten four through ten eight. This is all conference attendance, two staff members at the Attendance Child Accounting Professional Association Conference. Ten point five, three staff members in the student assistance training program. Ten point six, one staff member, this has attended the PA Grant Compliance Summit. Ten point seven, one staff member attending the standards for accounting training. And ten point eight, one staff member for attending the elements of purchasing workshop. Any discussion on those items? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Ten point nine is approval of the overnight trip. This is the high school football camp for approximately fifty students.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, we approve ten point nine.
Motion and a second to approve ten point nine, the overnight trip for the high school football team. Any discussion?
I wish them a great season.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Ten point ten, this is a agreement with Eastern University that allows us to accept, accept student teachers from the university.
I'd like to make a motion, we combine and approve ten point ten through ten point twelve.
Motion and a second to approve ten point ten through ten point twelve. These are all agreements to accept student teachers from ten point ten, Eastern University, ten point eleven, Shippensburg, ten point twelve, Grand Canyon University. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item eleven, approval of six policies as listed, field trips, discipline of students with disabilities, behavior support, and disciplinary procedures, three there, for administrative employees, professional employees, and classified employees.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve eleven point one.
Motion and a second to approve the six policies listed in eleven point one. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item twelve, which is Board Representative out of District, twelve point one, this is approval of Bill Thompson to fill the open seat of Dr. Nippert on the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center for a term that would end in December of twenty twenty five, which is Dr. Nippert's, formerly, Dr. Nippert's seat.
I'd like to make a motion to approve twelve point one, and welcome, Bill.
Motion and a second to approve twelve point one, Bill Thompson filling Dr. Nippert's seat on the Western Center JOC. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Twelve point two, this is approval of Tanya Taylor for the position of Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Legislative Liaison, also filling Dr. Nippert's seat, and the term would end in December of twenty twenty five.
I would like to make the motion to approve twelve point two, and thank you, Tanya. You're gonna do great.
We have a motion and a second to approve twelve point two, the Montgomery County Intermediate Legislative Liaison position with Tanya filling Dr. Nippert's seat until December of twenty twenty five. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item thirteen, which is a report of the Joint Operating Committee of the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center of, the minutes say August fifth, I believe the meeting was August fourth. That should be a correction to minutes there. Monday was the fourth?
Yes.
Yes, should, should read August fourth there on number thirteen. Meeting began, this was Dr. Finity's first meeting as Superintendent of Record for the Western, Western Center, and he begins his term of Superintendent of Record for the Western Center, so congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Have fun. We began the meeting with Administrative Director David Livinggood reporting on several items. On June ten, he met with the business managers of the three sending school districts. The business managers were not in favor of creating a capital expenses budget for the Western Center, and instead recommended establishing a bond to pay for renovations and improvements to the Western Center, which could allow for expansion. The action on that, we have four architectural firms that have submitted proposals for renovations, and the JOC will receive a recommendation from Dave in October. The new flooring in the cafeteria is complete, and the culinary room is nearing completion, floor there needed replacement. The electrical program instructor at the Western Center installed new LED lighting in both the automotive and the collision areas, utilizing a PICO rebate program. We have changed all of the locks at the Western Center. Before, they were locks that you turn by hand, which are not as safe and secure as other locks. The building is now ninety-five percent key card access, using a month, a grant that we received from Penny, from Senator Penny, Pennycock, and this strengthens both safety and security for the Western Center. On August twenty, Dave Livinggood was part of a panel presentation at the Pennsylvania Association of Career and Technical Administrators, talking about how to establish pre-apprenticeship programs, an activity that the Center has been pretty involved with. Dave will be presenting at the December Association for Career and Technical Education Conference on the topic of using AI, I'm blanking on the word A, intelligence. Art, thank you, artificial intelligence in grant writing. The Western Center is having an auction on August seventeen for unused items. The auctioneer is Ken Guyer. Kevin Rice, who is Executive Director of the Steel Center for Career and Technical Education in Pittsburgh, will be part of the staff meeting at the opening day for the Western Center. He will be talking about how he went from an underprivileged child to a student enrolled in a career and technical education program to now serving as Executive Director. Secondly, Business Manager Donna Wilson reported that she's focused on controlling expenses because the PA budget has not yet been approved, so they're really looking at paying for, for day-to-day expenses and for controlling it as much as they can. Principal Craig Robinson reported that pre-apprenticeship programs have been approved for electrical and precision machining programs utilizing university academy. There's two pre-apprenticeship programs approved, the third is welding. The state has thirty pre-apprenticeship programs that have been approved. Western Center has two of those thirty across the state, and soon to have three of those thirty with welding, so you, you can see the effort that's been placed there. Fourth, the solicitor, Beth Shore, reported that on July twenty fifth, the United States Department of Education announced that five schools in Northern Virginia violated Title Nine by allowing students to use bathrooms consistent with their gender identity. Following that, on July twenty nine, the Attorney General published guidance for reciprocence of federal funding regarding discrimination. These guidelines, we were told, are not policy, they are recommendations, and that leaves, Beth said, it leaves her very unsure as to what the impact will be on schools. But, but you see that kind of activity. The Policy Committee of the Joint Operating Committee presented six policies at their second reading, they were all approved. Lastly, under personnel, the Joint Operating Committee approved supplemental contracts for cosmetology instructors and for commercial art instructors. Three substitute teachers were approved, three additional substitute teachers, and also the JOC approved the EF Educational Tours Cuisine and Culture Trip to Italy on March twenty to twenty nine, with up to thirty students participating, with one adult chaperone for every six students. This is at no cost to the school. The next meeting of the JOC, which Bill is happily becoming a part of, is on September eighth at five o'clock via Zoom. Any questions on that report? Patty, anything to add? Well, thank you, Patty. Anything else to add? You all right? Moves us to agenda item fourteen, Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board Update. Is Anique on yet? Because she is not here, we move to the next item. Is, is that right? So we move to committee items. Fifteen point one is a report of our Athletics Co-Curricular and Community Relations Committee, headed by Patty Grimm, and Steve is usually involved there. So Patty, I don't know if it starts with you or Steve.
I'm just gonna welcome Steve to the microphone.
Well, welcome back, everybody. This meeting doesn't seem too long ago. June tenth, we met for an abbreviated meeting, because it was an executive session, so we met for about thirty minutes. I went over a quick recap of the twenty-four, twenty-five athletic season, a couple notes to highlight. Was the, the PAC Sportsmanship winner at the high school, the Silver Whistle Award winner that we received for the Montgomery County Chapter officials for our football, and our All Academic and Citizen Athletes recognition. And I noted that through all our fall, winter, and spring seasons, our All Academics had a cumulative GPA of four point zero nine, so we're very proud of their accomplishments. We also talked about facility upgrades to highlight, and this kind, kind of goes with Mr. Lappick's piece regarding the grant and the relationships that we have with a lot of our youth organizations that use our facilities at Potts Grove. We were able to upgrade a middle, middle school stadium scoreboard, which was needed in a big upgrade for our middle school programs, and that was in partnership with our Future Falcons, who use our facilities at the middle school and at lower, our Booster Club, and donations, so we were able to do that together with the school district and in our community. We also partnered with our youth wrestling club, who uses our gymnasium at the middle school to purchase a mat, again, in collaboration with both programs, as we value what they're doing, and they value allowing us to use our facilities in the evenings to support their programs. I also talked about a, a new program that we're starting this year at the high school. It is a eight-week mental skills training program tailored for motivating and high-achieving students who want to improve their performance on the field and in the classroom, essentially working on what is between your ears with our student athletes. The training will be provided by Dr. Rick Neff, who is a student athlete specialist and a performance psychologist that works with Villan, that works at Villanova. And I, I wanted to note that this is no cost to the students, this will happen during the, the school day, one time a month, and it is paid out of our Health and Wellness Foundation Grant. So, and we're really looking forward to that. I just checked a, a minute ago, and we have fifty-two students that are registered for this program, so I'm, I'm looking forward to, to building on, on this year after year. Shifting to communications, Mrs. Kleinfeldter gave a recap of our social media platforms. She highlighted the end-of-year celebration and activities that brought strong engagement for the district. The Senior Walk that, that we do throughout the, the district and all the buildings, I had seven thousand three hundred and fifty-six views. The congratulations, the congratulations to our retirees, eleven thousand five hundred and eighty views on Facebook, and the congratulations class of two thousand twenty reel had fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty-two views on Instagram. She also provided an overview of the district's Facebook engagement since two thousand twenty four. Facebook posts have reached over a hundred and sixteen thousand people and generated over one point four million photo and video views of our district. Instagram posts reached twenty-three thousand four hundred people, and more than four hundred and thirty-six thousand photo and video views over the last ninety days prior to June. So she is working hard and tirelessly to get our information out there for all our buildings and students and staff, K through twelve. One last thing, she discussed creating a school communities activity calendar, where she will be collecting up-to-date contact information for sports boosters, music boosters, and PTAs across the district this summer, and this will allow the district to relaunch a community events calendar for upcoming school year that will keep families informed and help school affiliated groups better coordinate events and activities. So that concludes the report from last year. I do wanna note, we are, started our athletic programs, our football started on August fourth, and the rest of them this Monday, and right now, we have two hundred and twenty-one approved students out there participating, and it's, it is hot, but it has been, it has been fun, and we're happy to see everybody back. So that concludes our report.
I can just thank you, Steve, for all you do, and good luck this season, this year.
Thank you, Steve, and Patty. Moves us to agenda item sixteen, new business. Let's begin with Stacy. Thank you. Tanya?
Sure. It, it does feel like it was yesterday, that last meeting, or a year, like, a year ago. It's like a weird in-between. I would just, for the teachers, the staff, and the community, I want to wish them a great start to the new year. It's going by fast, it's a very busy week, loaded schedules all around, and I'm very excited to see what's ahead for Potts Grove.
Thank you, Tanya. Patty?
I just have a couple things. Welcome, everybody, to a brand-new school year. I can feel the energy, it's gonna be a great year. I just wanna remind everybody to be kind and patient, and if you have any questions or comments, or you're confused, you just reach out to our administration, they're more than happy to help you. But teachers, they're coming, they're coming, they're on their way, they're all out there getting their new backpacks and everything. And I just wanna give a little boost out to the Booster Club, who supports all of our sports. They have all new apparel out there, so they'll be showing at the, at the football games, they'll have some, they'll have a stand out there, and online, so go get your Falcon wear, and thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Jim? Yeah, I went out of order.
Okay.
Thank you. Bill? Thank you. Dr. Finity?
Just wanna reiterate, I know we've been annoying with the messaging, but please fill out your first-day packet. We do know that it is tedious, but it truly is important with our messaging and our transportation system, so thank you. If you've done it, if you haven't and need help, please reach out to the district, and we'll get you some help.
Thank you, Dr. Finity. No new business from me. Ashley?
I'm good, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you. And Louis?
Just want to welcome everyone back, looking forward to a great school year, and I hope everyone enjoys their last week of summer as well, so.
Thank you. And again, Anique is not on the line. Moves us to agenda item seventeen, public comment. At this time, can be on any topic. We have Moves us to Agenda Item 17, Public Comment. At this time, can be on any topic. We have Nick Harmon. Is that correct? Last name? If you'd come up, please. Hi. We ask that you give your name and township that you live in, and then keep your comments, if you can, to two minutes or less.
Certainly. So my name is Nick Harmon. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me this evening. I am in Lower Potts Grove Township. I live right up the street, across the street from Ringing Rocks Elementary. Personally, I'm a Senior Vice President at Product Development and Software Company, and I have a history teaching various college courses at both Albright College and Penn State University. I'm here tonight to vehemently express concern with the backpack ban at the high school. This lady said that they're out shopping for their backpacks, and they are not, because we are banning them at the high school. We received the email indicating that the students were no longer able to carry backpacks. There is currently a petition with 463 signatures that was led by the student body. And I brought with me what was considered to be an approved backpack and a backpack. Now, the reasoning that was presented as to why they should not carry backpacks was due to vaping and theft. A vape is the size of a lighter. So as you can see, they can clearly fit in either one of these bags. And to have every single student carry around a bag that looks very similar to this, I think will encourage theft as opposed to prevent it. So as a numbers guy, when I make a decision for my staff or for my customers, it's based on data. I did not see in any notes, any data that was presented about the number of vaping incidents, theft at the high school. I saw no clear presentation on how you will measure success of this program, nor did I see any additional reasoning, aside from a quick email indicating students are not allowed to carry them, and these are the reasons why. I believe that the students are being trained to be young adults, and we are being counterproductive in limiting their growth by implementing this policy.
You're pausing.
I was limiting to two minutes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. The board traditionally does not respond to comments. As you would imagine, we hear them. We can discuss later, but we could get up to nine different opinions on what you said here. So by that, we, our remaining silence does not indicate approval or disapproval of your comments, and we appreciate you bringing your concerns to us.
Certainly. I have my daughter here with me as well. This was also a learning exercise to show that she should take a political stance. So I do appreciate your time, and I appreciate your comment there, and I do hope that you take my comments into consideration. And I hope to hear some additional information on the topic in the future.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you for accompanying your father. This is how decisions get made with agreements and disagreements in public.
Sir, thank you for coming out. If you do have a couple of minutes after the meeting, I'd be happy to...
Again, thank you very much. Any other comments for public comment? Before we move then to adjournment, reminder that the next board meeting is August 26 at 7 o'clock. Moves us to a motion to adjourn? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.